See, I covered it. Let's see, put there right now.
See what time it goes to?
Guys. Let's do it. In three, two, one.
California.
Oh, boy. Just a little bit.
It was nice. Oh, yeah, I know. Two beds. Say, when I heard that, two beds?
That's a rare. Councilor Collins, work session to order.
Councilman Sorel. Put your mind to this invitation. I know Councilwoman Thomas, I mean, Councilwoman Jackson.
Yeah, I have a shout. It's about here. He's been working here this afternoon. He's sitting there. And do something to us, Lord, in the spirit of cooperation and the will to do what is right for with the people. And understand that whatever we do, it is a conscious decision and what we think is right as individual councilpeople. Whatever decision is made, let's pray that it is indecent and in order and do it in the name of Jesus Christ and all the name of Jesus be praised. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Councilman Sorel. Uh, to the citizens, we have Mr. African Morlock who is, uh, talking about the landfill. You know, we've been talking about the landfill for the last several months, but he has some property out there. Uh, I asked him if he would come forward to talk about maybe some property that we could purchase to help with the landfill.
Thank you.
Sir, I'll leave Angela copies. She's got a team clear. Copy. Thank you, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, sir. Um, I'm a former city reporter retired. Um, I own a property that is directly west of the current landfill. And I'm proposing that y'all look at this and purchase this property in order to expand your landfill so you would not have to move anything. And I have thirty-one acres there and it's in section thirty-one, township seventeen, range eleven. And at thirteen hundred dollars an acre, that is well below market value. It's appraised at twenty-one hundred dollars an acre right now. That's what the county has as appraised at. Uh, I propose that I'm gonna pay for everything, um, the expenses of the deed, my attorney fee, and pro-rate property tax to whenever it is purchased or if it's purchased. Um, y'all, the city council or city will pay for everything else such as abstracts, survey and contract, uh, um, cost of, or other costs. This is, this is in the city's best interest, I think. You would not have to move anything in the next ten, possibly fifteen years. Cause your current property has four sales on it right now or five sales. Four sales. And it, and the current sale has, well, one of the current sales is fitting up very rapidly. And you could put at least five sales on that thirty-one acres, maybe six. And it's pretty good property. It's been, it's been in my family for most of my life, all, well, all of my life anyway. And, um, my grandmother sold the City Industrial Corporation, the current Public Works property sixty years ago, which was old all along. And y'all took that over for Public Works and everybody. Year, what, ten years ago, wasn't it, something like that, eight, ten years ago? But, um, have y'all got any questions about that? Councilwoman Thomas, Councilwoman Jackson, and Councilmember. Yes, ma'am.
Yes, you're talk, are you talking about the, the land, okay, the landfill is right here.
Yeah, the landfill is right here. If you look at the map or the photo that's on the backside, you can see it says any subdivision on the bottom.
Yeah.
Selma-Burnsville Highway, that is your current landfill right there.
Right here in the middle.
The one, the property that is in yellow, outlined in yellow, is mine.
Okay.
Okay, right next door to it is right there. You would not have to move a lot. And there's approximately thirty-one acres in there.
So that mean like you go back around towards.
Oh, no, you can get, you can get to it off of water avenue.
I know, I'm just saying it goes all the way back.
Yeah, it goes all the way back to the railroad track.
That's what I was saying.
Yes, ma'am.
As you said, you own all of that.
Yes, ma'am. Are the county's councilwoman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jackson.
Actually, I don't have a question, I just have a comment.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for even bringing this to us for consideration.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for being thoughtful enough.
Oh, yeah.
To bring this to our attention and to make this offer, um, I would only just suggest that our treasurer and attorney get together and bring us back what they think is in the city's best interest and feasible. As you stated, um, according to price, it feels in our best interest and as soon as we get that information, I think we'll be ready to make a responsible decision. But we're thankful that you are even offering.
Oh, yes, ma'am. Councilwoman.
Who did appraisal of this property?
Uh, who, who did the appraisal? There hasn't been that, well, what, what it is is just the tax assessors, what they got on it. Um, we have not got appraisal on it.
So.
It needs to be surveyed and then appraised.
If, 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 uh, if this is thirty-one acres according to the appraisal, uh, sheet that I have here, is that six thousand seven hundred foot area? Total thirty-one acres?
Sir?
Is that six thousand seven hundred foot?
Six dollars?
No, 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 that's sixty-seven thousand.
Sixty-seven thousand.
I'm sorry.
Sixty-seven.
Yeah, okay. So the last time it was appraised, it was only done by the county?
Yeah, I, I, I think so, yes, yes. That's the only, that's the only, that's the only thing we have right there. If we need anything further, you know, I'll need to know.
I think, I think before the city can even consider, man, it would have to be appraised.
Yes, okay. Councilman, will you answer one of the questions? We're gonna find out the last time it was appraised. I mean, not appraised, but surveyed. Surveyed. Really, some of them did the survey. Okay, he did. About ten years ago. Okay, alright. Ten or twelve years ago. You possibly could get ahold of him and get that from him. Well, he probably put down pins anyway, right? So. Yeah. Have you reviewed the survey with him before? Yeah, I've done surveys. Yeah, so there's pins down? Yeah, there are pins down. And then I guess the other idea is you're gonna keep that, uh, four point three acres there that makes up part of that triangle? Uh. Coming off, uh, the Burnsville Highway right there, so to get access to it. I think y'all own that. Oh, that little edit area right there, the little triangle? Yeah, that little triangle in there. In between, yeah. Yeah, I think y'all own that. Okay, has your, it looked like your name was on it as far as being belonging to y'all. Well, I, I can't remember if it is mine or y'all. So, check on it.
Mine's in the highlighted part of the photo.
Yes, sir, no, I'm with you, I'm on the actual flat map. Yeah, but the other four point three. Yes, sir. In section sixty-two. Yes, sir. Okay, of the sixty-two acres, yeah. Yes, sir, so I was just asking if, if that was something you're planning to keep, you know, cause again, to get access to the property, we'd have to come. Well, you already have access there anyway, you know, I think. Right, I was looking at the road, so that's why I was just asking, cause see how our road goes and where the four point two sits, where the four point three sits on the map, so I was just asking. Yeah. We'd have to take our road down further and turn in further down, or maybe we own that, we just go right next to it. I think y'all already own that. Okay, so it's worth checking on, I appreciate that, thank you, sir. Thanks, so. Thanks for considering us. But surveying, definitely. Clean that all up for us, thank you. We cleaned it up. Councilman Johnson?
You know, Mr. President, is there, um, something we may have to do to move forward, just like get something from AVM or maybe from the surrounding, people that own the property to see?
I just, I just got a letter from AVM.
Right, so I'm just saying, we, for our best interest, we'll follow up with this before we make.
Y'all should, y'all should have gotten a letter from AVM too, the city should have. Well, we didn't, we, well, after, we had to, you got to see, I should have brought.
Right, before we move forward with this, we, we need to see what we can do on that property, uh, in case we can't do, you know, surround the people right now.
Or there's nobody in there.
Right, yeah, just see other folks on the property, right, surround it, right.
Get a copy of that. You did it.
Yeah, but I'm the one over here.
Over there?
Yeah. Yeah, we need to find out.
Fishing and hunting.
They may not want us to do this, we just need to find out and see what we can do.
And that's why I did throw it forward, that the attorney, that's way for the family side. And they probably, they probably, I don't think anybody ever goes over there.
Look, there's an issue. But I would imagine, Council, that if we ever get into a pressure more land, not saying that we will, the city owns fifty acres out here in two nineteen. And I do recall when there was a problem with the, uh, landfill from the current, from the previous administration, there was a tremendous dumping on that fifty acres. And of course, there was an outcry from the citizens themselves because they was not deemed, they landed, and, yeah, AVM did sign it because they didn't want to put it up to make it.
That's true, they did, yeah, they did. Councilwoman Benjamin?
Um, Councilman Johnson, I, I, I just happened to, um, stroll out to see the work over, um, by Ziegler, uh, but there's some land over there near that area, uh, it's, it's unkept, but there's a lot of it. Who owns that land, do you know?
I think Causa, Causa, Causa.
Causa, come on.
Right.
Okay.
Now, also be the mind, now, this high, want to, uh, yes, they wanna donate a lot of that property to the city. We just got to figure out what, what area they still want to donate. Now, I understood Judge Bob Armstrong, uh, set a lot of property in that area. And so we just got to seek up his high, came here, which I had opportunity to go with his high to look at some of the property that they want to give to the city, even the city owner that used to be there. They want donated.
That's a lot of land that's not being kept up. I was wondering who owns it and, um, is this right here or here?
Right.
I just wanted to see the work that was done at Ziegler that we paid for.
Right.
And I had to pass through and buy it.
Right, yeah, and that's what we get told was back on force, or we get them back.
Absolutely, you need help over there now.
And worse than that.
All right, what's your opinion on that one? What's your opinion on that one?
I'll share.
Mr. President, I want to, to bring up, I had this later to ask about the, um, whichever, and the, and, and recycling thing to, cause this would sure fit in over there, cause we could start the recycling program on that. I'm going to be, uh, helping him with the grant for the full recycling program this due in March, Ms. Thomas, cause she wants to do one in her particular, her area too. In fact, she's going to be taking over the recycling part, I'm working on that, so.
Okay, thank you. In other courses, we must move on. Alright, thank you. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
I'm gonna do that, I'm thinking.
What? I'm thinking. And I'll strike that, eight years later.
Yeah.
Please.
Thank you, sir.
Next, Attorney Jones.
Good evening, y'all. Good evening. Um, the main thing I just want to talk to you about is again, the jail lease and something we gotta still think about. Last time we met, I don't think Chief Green had taken office yet, so I got a chance to talk to him, uh, last week, I talked to President Booey too. He's thrown up the idea of maybe increasing the beds from sixteen to eight and seeing if the county owes him a hundred thousand dollars. So we're, um, kind of looking at that, seeing if that can happen, so I just wanna throw that out to you guys too. Um, we've asked for, so I don't think the county's gonna be able to give us the exact number of medical bills that city inmates incurred. I think it was all just paid together. So I asked him to give us the last several years of what they spent on all inmates, maybe we can get an idea of what it costs per inmate. Um, we're still waiting on the documents, I've given all the attention, so they don't have to have both. Again, just wanted to come, see if you got any questions and I guess remind you guys of something he's been thinking about, uh, and if you are even interested in that eight thing, saying for a hundred thousand dollars.
Especially the simple fact that it's misdemeanor, uh, I would assume that, you know, either they could either be bonded out of, uh, running out of their own recognizance, or, you know, a long time if they really was staying, it's probably DUI or domestic dollars, and that's for twelve hours at the max, in my opinion, though.
I was gonna suggest that, uh, when the attorney go back to negotiate, that you do take eight beds rather than sixteen, and the idea if there's gonna be a need for any medical attention, you know, that they be released. They are misdemeanor cases, cause once they turn federal, they go back to the county, just maybe. Uh, I think a process would have to be, uh, talked about as to how this would be done with the Cherokee person, as to how and on what condition that they will be released to avoid anything, uh, you know, because according to the law, and you could reckon, the city can't be charged no way.
Well, with this contract with the county, we can't make.
Give you the contract, you, you.
Not a lot, not a lot.
And I don't think the county's gonna do it.
Well, you know. The contract is behind.
Yeah, I, I think it's coming up, uh.
Yeah, it's part of the service. Yeah. It's part of the service.
Well, I think, uh, Council, if you can just draft up our contract, now who do draft it, they or us?
This was, this was drafted, I think one was drafted by actually a department firm, but I think this amendment, I'm not sure, I didn't draft this amendment, I, I assume, I don't think they even drafted it.
Well, finally, who's gonna charge us back in the contract, which is us, they just don't have that clause in there. Hopefully it'll get back.
Also too, Judge Dunn is.
I'll give it up. I'm very aware of this clause.
Judge Dunn is marrying, you know, the idea that you said about the eight beds.
I talked to Judge Dunn about the bed, so he's considering it too, uh, but as far as that clause, we've talked about it, I don't think it's just gonna sneak through.
Well, we can all anticipate, like, oldest drunk inmate. Yeah. Councilwoman Johnson, Councilwoman Jackson.
Mr. President, I, I, one time, over there, and I was, so, we used to house some of the inmates, uh, what, what, what was it like over there? Do we have beds over there? We just gotta overnight.
The drunk tank kinda bit.
Chief, uh, Rogers did that assessment, I think it, it was called two, two to five, five hundred, half a million dollars. The last assessment that they did, uh, five, half a million.
And so we're.
And then you have, Councilman Jones?
Yes, sir.
Councilwoman Johnson?
So, uh, Woody, Attorney Jones, we, I threw out that idea of less beds, and because the county does not have any data to tell you for the last twenty years or even the last year, how many inmates have stayed twelve hours or more of the county jail misdemeanor, uh, city inmates have stayed, then, um, we don't know if we actually use those sixteen beds, we don't know if we need eight beds, and do we need one bed a month? Um, and so we don't have that data, but they're getting some, some technologies that should be able to give us more information next year and put us in a better negotiating, um, situation or worse, because their data could show that we actually need fifty beds. Um, but I'm, I'm just in agreement with, um, my fellow councilmembers, that we should definitely, we should negotiate eight or less, and that, um, we, I know we're not in a position that we can't, but we could definitely talk to the judicial branch to determine what happens if someone cannot bond out, and we have, we are at our max bed, but I know it can't be made from the legislative branch, it have to be strictly, strictly through the judges, and, but, um, that could be a policy that they develop, um, because as you stated, that when you're sick, there oftentimes they come to the court, and because of the sickness, they, they're at home on house arrest or things of that sort, and so there, there are procedures and policies that can be in place for those inmates that may have, um, medical issues, so we don't have to incur that cost, and so I, I would like to explore those, and definitely less beds, I actually think we don't need one in four a month.
Yeah, I, I don't know, I mean, I, Chief Green seems to think we would use less beds than sixteen.
Right.
Sheriff's indicated though, that we use a little less, but sometimes we need the sixteen, um, our judges like more beds actually, so they could hold people in contempt, they don't come to court, so, you know, I don't really know, I, 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 I mean, I'm, I'm gonna do whatever y'all tell me to, but I don't have any comment on how many we need, nobody, I don't have any data of how many people we keep up there.
I don't currently, since I've been on the, on the council, I don't currently work with this report like I used to prior to becoming on the council, but I did work very closely, um, from two thousand seven to two thousand sixteen, and it's just, it's been a custom that we try very hard, and they at that time tried very hard not to lock up inmates, um, and not to hold people unnecessarily in for previously reasons, and I think that's good practice, um, and we often saw that oftentimes, that people were bonding out before they got to the jail, um, so by the time they brought them up to our jail, they were already there with the bonds, and so they were going out and getting right out, people were following them, so that has been my experience, but as I say, I haven't worked as close since two thousand sixteen, but seeing the documents, um, sometimes, I just don't, don't see it, you know, they, they don't have to be there, they're gonna pay fifty dollars to get out.
Sure, sure, and so we, we, I've talked to Phil about it, so he's gonna, he's gonna ask, President, we should marinate on it, and so, we'll see.
Councilman, over to the county. Well, wouldn't the city magistrate's office have the number of the folks we sent out there?
I don't have any numbers.
No, they wouldn't have a number for that.
They have a number of cases, um, that actually come to court, um, but they're, they're, our, their jail should have the number of people that.
Well, you think they would have, this guy was sent to this location, and we received him on this date, and this is what happened, I even say, that doesn't exist.
They, they have the court data, but they don't keep in their system how long they stayed in jail, and so, and they were keeping their system if they had to bring them from jail to court, and there's not a lot of cases that they bring from jail, that they have to transport from jail to court, most of the cases are coming to court because the bail bond is engaged in their court date when they walk out of the county jail, and so that's actually data that we should be having at, at the jail, I call there every morning, I have to check a jail list for individuals that are supposed to get out, that's supposed to report from, from Circuit of District Court to court, and they can tell me every day, this person was released on Friday at five o'clock, this person was released on Tuesday at one o'clock, and so they can do that, those things, but this collective data is still on cards, and so.
That's the, was the change in technology we ran against this part of the money. We receive program.
Councilwoman Thomas, and Councilwoman. Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman.
Thank you. I realize that this is probably a committee discussion, but this just sort of popped into my head, and I, I don't know why we didn't think about this, why I didn't think about this before, so somebody else did. Have we ever discussed a, um, reimbursement to the county type thing, like the state does? They reimburse the county so much per prisoner when they keep a state inmate, um, or the feds, when they keep a federal inmate, they reimburse the county per bed that's used per night. Have we not discussed something like that with the county?
No, we talked about over the, over the system, but not just one per.
I use, I think use, we pay for what we use.
Well, and also, I mean, we pay for beds that we don't need.
Well, that's what I'm saying, to your point, I think we're saying.
Right, and we pay for what.
Five beds, paying you five beds.
Like what, what the county pays, I mean, what the state pays, what the feds pay, why should we, who have no money, pay for sixteen beds, but we probably don't use eight of them, and probably pay more than the feds and the state pays, who, oh, arguably, arguably has a lot more money than we do to pay, why aren't we having, just being held to the same standard that they are? I think that's a pretty good question, I think that's a pretty good argument, and, and, Mr. President, I would ask that, that we talk about that as a committee, um, do you think that that's feasible to do?
Because I know we want to meet with the, as a committee, meet with everyone, um, turn the cabinet along with, also appropriate, just want to have that committee pass out some of the ideas, so that can do something later next week with myself.
Yeah, to get some numbers, that's what I'm asking. Engage the position to negotiate, how much they willing to negotiate. If he's thinking about eight beds, that's a good sign.
Well, I, just, as a matter of fact, just being held to, not being held to a more stringent standard than the state and the feds, I mean, pick up a little Selma, yeah.
Because I never stand with them.
We are a part of the county, absolutely.
An area close to the, uh, far as the bed space, they say they would be sick off for prisoners.
And I think, uh, Attorney Jones, could, I just could, excuse me, I'm sorry, just could you just find out what the feds and the state pay?
Too, remember this, so, we're going through December of this, this will be December nineteenth, December twenty, so we're gonna cut back here next year, so I think it, you'll be thinking about the future.
Well, if we get data, they can tell us one thing or the other, we can make a better decision, right now, we got no data to even base any decision, really, other than what we've done historically, which we know in City Summit is not necessarily the best thing, so. Councilwoman.
Have, did we ask, um, Councilwoman Benjamin brought up a great point the last time, what is Valley Grand and Wolf?
They don't have municipal board, they're the county.
Valley Grand, they don't have, they don't have any.
They just have the county, their county inmates.
So they don't, they don't have anybody that have to go, so all of there, because they're in the county, all of there, it comes to the county, so they don't have a separate city.
But what are, my question still is, what are they paying, they're paying?
They show they're not paying anything, because in county, you know, they have, Valley Grand's a city, but they don't have a municipal.
Who's paying for them?
Well, they asked for stepped up patrols by the Sheriff's Department in Valley Grand, so I mean, they should be paying.
Councilwoman Thompson, we're paying for it.
Somebody has to pay some, we paying for it.
So if we didn't have a municipal, it's not the fact that we have a municipal palate, it's not the fact that we have a city, it's the fact that we have a municipal board.
Yeah, well, I, I think we asked about.
Selma's paying for everybody. Show me.
Alright, Attorney. Excuse me.
Alright, so I'm gonna get numbers from the feds, and I'll be happy to come to a committee meeting.
I thought we, we had asked about the court.
Yeah. So.
Is there anything else, Attorney?
Yeah. The next thing we talked about is this weed event, declaring some of this property conditions, you're gonna cut grass, I talked to some of y'all about this, I'm kinda at an impasse because somebody's gotta go out there and look at it, take pictures of it, it's actually, and our ordinance has to be twelve inches tall, document a file, and then we can declare a nuisance, give a notice, have it here, and cut the grass, but I'm not sure who can do this, or supposed to do this.
Well, I.
Where, Councilman?
Well, I took picture, I got pictures of all the masts, before we cut it, I took pictures, I took pictures of the back, the way it was, cause I knew probably some lady was gonna ask that.
So I could find a letter, it had to be in the ordinance, it says that it has to be, of course, uh, code is for, uh, officer. Okay, that was my question. Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not sure who that is, I need to talk to.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, Councilwoman.
It is somewhere, and I don't know why we keep dancing around it, this, this person is working for free, um, we've had the chief of police to tell us who that person is, we have that person to tell us who that person is, we've had the mayor's office to tell us who that person is, and I've used that person, so evidently that person knows who they are, and that's Michael Goins, and he's licensed to do that, and he, he, he's a licensed carrier, and he can write citations, and he can do all of that, and I've used him in board four.
Awesome.
Yeah, he's that person.
If I could go like, and see, and I can't tell them what to do, but I can tell them what we need, and guess he can go to somebody and see them, get thoughts to do it, and I can also still write letters, I mean, I can write letters to these people saying, hey, And I can also still write letters, I mean, I can write letters to these people saying, hey, your grass is too tall, we're gonna declare a nuisance if you'll cut it. And I even talked to Judge Nod, we were just talking about it, he said that works a lot of times. Yeah, so we can still do that.
Well, the process, the process has been broken. There is a long process that has been, how this government has operated. It has been broken. I would love to have Mr. Goins' number and call him, give him some directives, but we can't. And if we have, then it's because he did it, because you asked him. But I think if there's any problem, then we would rather be reminded, we don't have the authority to give him directives. It is so sad this process has been broken. And until this process is fixed, your hands is tied, and I truly understand that, and I, and I, but I don't know what the answer is, I really don't.
Councilwoman, Councilwoman.
So to finish, your hands are not tied. Uh, there is a process by law that's in place that you have to give a certain number, we have to give a certain number of days for X, Y, and Z. And he knows that. Now, to, to the, to the point of the broken piece, yes, it's broken, and we are having to do things on our own that we never had to do before. And so we're doing that. But the process is, and which is why I asked you two weeks ago, can we just give you a list of those things that need to be going weed abandonment? When Attorney Dunn used to come, he used to just give us a list of what, what code enforcement found, or what we found, or what he found.
Right.
In a list, in order, because then you take that list and you go by the lawful process of giving them, whatever the days are, I can't remember.
Forty-five.
Forty-five, thirty, you start with forty-five, then you do this, and then you do that, and it's, it's written, it's already. Yeah, that's what I'm saying, so your hands are not tied. And, and so it's, it's already written. And so if we want to get back on the unbrokenness, we can go to the, through the process, which is why I asked you, can we all give you a list of those things that uh, that we, uh, that need to go through weed abandonment? Because, because, because of the real process.
I do have some property, and I can, like I said earlier, I can write him a letter.
Yeah.
But I, until somebody goes out there, documents it, measures it, it has to be twelve inches.
That, that's one thing is probably process, so we have a person, we, we are ignoring that we have a person, we have a person, and you ain't not having all that.
And I can't tell him, but I, I can't, I can't tell him.
Yes, yes, and, and so it's that, so there's, there is, there is law, there is law that we can go through and not we have to go through. We need to, to change something or have something changed, we need to do that, because we know there's a person that might not tell, ever tell him to do anything. And that's to my point of where we've been having to do things on our own. This is why you're getting contracts from us, and then you're asking questions about why we're cutting this with certain amounts of money, certain pots of money, is because we're doing things on our own. That's what is broken, it's because we're doing things on our own, and we have to, because as a matter of talk of safety.
Well, I think for now, the best we'll do, let me write these people letters, address them, I have to.
Yeah, it works, it works.
See what happens, and then we can explore.
It works, it's everything.
I was gonna say to be clear, send you a list, let's, with the addresses, the photos, everything else emailed to you.
Write him a letter.
And then you'll write him a letter, then he'll keep us informed of where we are, so we can take additional steps in this.
Yeah.
Or, or try to make. Right, right, right. Well, I mean, as, as, you know, again, we, we all know, I mean, I take a picture of the grass that's twelve inches, I send you a photo, but I mean, I don't know what else you need beyond that.
Yeah, that's right.
That'll stand up somewhere.
As you research, you own, you own the property.
We can.
Because a lot of time, we don't know all that.
Yeah, I can do that.
The Dallas County plat that's online can help you find that if you're familiar with it. TSC map.
Yeah, they have a map, and he can go on.
And it shows you exactly who owns what parcel, or at least a basic building block for that process.
All right, any other questions?
Just to minimize our billing fees from our good attorney.
Any other questions?
Councilwoman Thompson.
Councilwoman.
Yeah, and I, I remember too, back then, uh, when we first had, when we did have a code enforcement, you remember? We put the ordinance out about the property, you know, it ran in the paper. It ran in the paper back in what, it was twenty seventeen or twenty eighteen? When they ran the article in the paper telling people about their property, you know, how many days they have. And you know, a lot of our citizens know that lives out of town, they pay taxes, and they, they hear us and they watch what we talk about. Some of them have been uh, kind of coming in, cutting their property now, they know that we don't have, you know, code enforcement, we don't have city workers. So you used to pay, because one man called me, he trying to find out where his check there. He paid um back in twenty, I think it's right at when we started having this problem. He paid the city to have the grass cut on his property, but he keep checking, his check has never ran through. So I told him, what he needs to do is uh, his check probably is sitting up in the office. He asked me, he said, he been checking his, his, his check. The check hasn't even been through, and he wants to know, how do he, I told him, call the mayor's office. And uh, you can find out, he said he was very concerned that he wrote the city a check, and it has never, it's never been through. He wanna know where's his check. So I told him, we need to call the mayor's office.
Any other questions for Attorney Jones? Any other questions for Attorney Jones? Councilwoman Thompson, do you have a question, go on?
Yeah, I got a question. He, I know our attorney is put in a position where he, he, he represents the council and he represents the mayor. And um, you know, he's kinda like on the, he gotta represent both of us.
Right, tough position.
He's in a, he don't know how, you know how some people, uh, he's not tough, 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 but I put it like, he's kinda like on it.
I mean, I have to give objection to my.
Well, you know, uh, the reason why I say this, because I feel, you know, I feel real bad, you know, we are elector officials. Where, when we asked to, uh, for someone to see the buildings, that uh, I go through the proper procedures with the president of the city council. Uh, I shouldn't have to keep emailing and keep calling him. Uh, we had one of our judges wanting to go into the Dallas Academy, and uh, I had already talked to President Bowie. Uh, he called and told them, you know, it's sad that we get to this point where uh, the president don't even get record, recognize what he put in for. And uh, we go to the Dallas Academy building, we being put in, they tell him that someone's gonna be there. And we go down there, we stay there, me and the judge, Armstrong, and another gentleman. We waited approximately about thirty-five, forty minutes. And uh, we saw Ms. Davis, we saw her went back to, to the uh, performing art, and uh, she left. And uh, I said, well, Judge, I'm gonna go down here and see what's happening. And we go back down there and, and uh, they say, uh, well, she gone, we'll go back, she's at, in the office down here. But we couldn't get in the building, we couldn't, you know, we couldn't get in the building. So you know, I felt kinda bad, because we was out there in a hot sweat, sun, just standing out there, sleeping out there.
I'm listening.
I'm listening.
There's no.
I mean, did you, just as I know what the charge is saying? He said, nothing he can do.
I'm grabbing a resolution to give the.
Okay, okay.
Court's office, I can't thank anybody.
Okay, well.
Take the keys, that's what I'm telling you.
Okay. Let me finish. Okay, you know, me and the judge and I, we got there sweating, I'm sweating, he's sweating, and the other person sweating. You know, you get sweating out there in the hot sun, you get mad. And uh, we start walking around the building, me and, me and Judge Armstrong and the gentleman, we kept walking around. And I'm telling you, so God, he's good, he's good God. He's good God.
Yeah, because I know when I talked with the mayor, he, he, I mean, not, well, they, she mentioned that uh, for you to contact her to uh.
Be locked out of the building.
Yeah, to open the building.
Yes.
Huh?
She mentioned to me that, you know, contact her, and she would open the building.
And we did, we went, we went three times.
So listen, she's gonna do that now, she contacts?
I said, you contacted her.
That was fine.
We, we, she never, she wasn't there the first time, but the late, the, uh, the other, we have two people working in, uh, at the performing art. Ms. Edwards, she was there, Ms. Minifee, Ms. Minifee, she was there. And uh, I said, Ms. Minifee, is Ms. Davis, we were supposed to meet her, here's some word to Dallas County. She said, well, Ms. Davis don't come in till four o'clock. I said, four o'clock? I said, President Bowie, uh, contact her, and she said for us to contact her when we get here. So I said, well, can you call? She said, well, I really don't have a number, she said, I don't have a phone number for her. I said, you don't have a, a cell number or contact number? She said, not right now, offhand. So I said, well, okay. So a few minutes later, we standing out there waiting, and we did see Ms. Davis come. Ms. Davis came to the performing art, and she went inside. And uh, we was still standing out there waiting, we thought she was gonna come down there where we were, but she never did. She got back in the car, and she went to the mayor's office. And uh, when I got in the car, rode around, and there was her, she was over here at City Hall. So I went back and told Judge, I said, well, her car is City Hall, let's wait a little longer. We did wait a little longer. But you know, like I said, you know, you get tired of that, it makes you, you know, it's like you're up against. You just get tired of it. He, he don't even recognize. So you know, we got a lawyer, he said, ain't nothing he can do.
Councilwoman Thompson said you had the resolution, right?
Well, uh.
Well, yeah, we, we did want all the keys. I mean, and, and I give, the mayor passed the resolution, but again, I can give it to him, can't make any, I don't have a set of the keys.
No, he, we didn't do the other one, the other one, we was gonna suggest that, since every time we have someone uh, wanna go in the building and we can't get in. Uh, the only thing uh, that I, I talked to someone, and they said the only thing you could do is, is, because the council are over this uh, city property. And by not getting in, they say you could change the laws, so uh.
That's the resolution I'm speaking of?
Yes, but the, the attorney hasn't done it. I told him about it, but he hasn't.
I haven't done a resolution to change the laws on most of the.
Yeah, he said he, he, I think he's in a, he's in a middle of a heart, he think he's in a, he said, he, I think what this attorney is, he's one attorney where I'm gonna just be honest with him, you know, he's a good guy, but he, he represents the mayor, and he represents us. And you know, the mayor hired him, I'm just gonna be straight, I'm straight talking, you know, the mayor hired you.
So I think y'all, I don't have a contract with y'all, so y'all can actually terminate it.
But, no, we don't wanna turn, it's, we didn't say.
No, I'm just saying, y'all, we have a contract with the council, and it's a contractual relationship with the council. Y'all hired us, but we do represent the city, so we represent both sides, and so if there's one dispute like this, if there's a dispute like this, I mean, I can give everybody objective advice, what I think you can do, but I can't represent the council and sue the maker to, and make him.
Let me clarify what I was asking, I was asking her, she asked for the resolution to be drafted, because what, what has happened in the past is we asked for a resolution to be drafted, and it's drafted. Whether it passes or not, but your answer is let you think about it.
I don't know if I, if it's legal.
Whether you wanna draft it or not?
Draft a resolution, change those laws in the city building, I'd like to look into it before I just draft it. I think she mentioned it to me last week, right?
Councilwoman.
I'm gonna research that, see if it's legal.
Um, I, I think that there's some, some thing, I think this might, they need to, we probably need to discuss this under legal issues in an executive session. Because I think there's some, yeah. But.
Why, why are we not doing it? I just wanna know.
Because there's.
We go back here.
A lot. It involves legal action. And there's some legal action we could, and I would recommend taking, but I don't, but, but we should not discuss that in public.
What's your thinking? We shouldn't discuss.
And some other things, some of our options.
So my question probably is about the res, in that case, she has something she thinks needs to go back in the negative session, but I'm still asking about the resolution about the laws. So when you first do that, with the attorney, after he thinks about whether he wants to draft it or not.
Well, I'll wait on him.
See if it's legal, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
We could have another resolution.
We could get Attorney Seagull to. Well, I thought she already checked with the legality of.
I asked President Bowie to turn it over to, to the other lawyer.
Well, I thought you checked with the league and all that.
I did, but I did check on two. Okay, we're talking.
That ain't even a session, so I'm not talking to you. This is not, I have it.
All right, any other questions for, any other questions for Attorney Jones?
No, I'm with y'all, that's what I'm saying.
Any other questions for Attorney Jones? Councilwoman Thompson.
I, I would like to say this. We are a body of leaders, and we represent the city. We are, over the city, we, we have committees, and each one of us have a committee that we perform. When citizens come to you and address their issues about the city property and the city building, I expect to give them, uh, I, I, I believe in doing right and speaking truly. I don't like lying to them, and I don't like uh, putting things off, you know, because they're spending their money when they rent our buildings. And they expect to, uh, for our buildings to be up to the standard. So I understand where you at right now, but uh, can you, whenever you get a chance, you just come back, you know, we can go.
All right, Councilwoman.
Counselor, I truly, I truly understand your position. Your job is clear to me, your job is to keep this council out of legal ramifications. Your job is to follow the laws of this city that have been established, by the laws that have been established by the state of Alabama. Some of us may not go to readily accept your legal advice, and of course, that's uh, that's damn. But your job is one thing, one thing only, that is to keep us out of legal ramifications. And I appreciate you because you're, you know, you're in a bad, you're in a bad position, you really are. And I thank the way you've been.
You're in a bad position.
And I thank the way you've been handling and dealing with us, you know, this, I mean, it just, I mean, it just happened. And I just want you to know, I appreciate your services, and I would, I would have your job for all the money in the world. Because we got nine personalities up here. And sometimes they're cohesive, and sometimes they're going in all kind of different directions. But one thing that you have to do is remain steady, and that is to keep us within the law and to keep us out of.
Any other questions for Attorney Jones? Any other questions?
Yeah, so how long will you think about that?
You know, I have to have an answer by, probably not tomorrow, by the next meeting. I think Ms. Thomas said something to me on the phone about it, maybe last week, maybe Thursday or Friday, when this was going on with Joe Trump.
That's it, I'm team five, because we can afford five.
Yeah, I, maybe, I had a couple of it last week, one of the issues with Joe Trump, wasn't that last week? But anyway, I mean, yeah, uh, give me a little time. I mean, I don't know if we'll have an answer pretty tomorrow on changing blocks of public buildings.
I mean, if it's on the red toilet, you're gonna be present.
I'm gonna research it and see if it's legal, and if it's legal, I'll, I will draft a resolution for you on that.
That was my question, how long will you just have to think about whether you want?
Next meeting, not tomorrow, but the next.
I was gonna suggest that, you know, if you come to the conclusion before we get to the next meeting, press your email, it's okay, sure, and we just go ahead and say, you know, that's what we're simply, he's gonna go ahead and draft, we just find out it's okay, you'll go ahead and draft it, sure, but you just wanna make sure it's legal, so you can do something. So once you determine that, there's nothing else stopping you from doing that.
That's right. Let me ask you this while I'm looking into it, what buildings are we talking about?
Everything except for here, probably.
Maybe, does your president, you can call him, maybe, tell me that?
That's, that's one topic, because people are interested in renting.
Any other questions for?
Yeah, I, I got no code. Can I ask Ms.? Uh, one of my items on here. Uh, Attorney Woody.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, I wanna ask you something, but this had, uh, I, I would like to find out about this. Uh, do you have any information about the American Bond Fund? You don't?
What, what about it, uh?
I was trying to, uh, it had been on me, uh, thinking about this, I was looking. I wasn't a councilperson at that time. Ms. Youngblood, am, am I, uh, is, is there something I said there?
No, nothing you said at all, nothing, nothing to do with you at all.
Okay.
Not done yet.
No, I'm talking about the question that I asked about the.
No, I just, I just made a comment about the city, doesn't have anything to do with you at all.
Okay, okay. Uh, I was asking a question. This, this bond was done when, uh, we wasn't at the office. I'm saying, but do you know it, you don't have.
Is this about the IT?
It's more than the IT, the bond is.
I bet you're telling me that 12 million dollar bond that was passed on the...
Allocation.
Allocation and all.
How was... How was broken down to...
Yeah, I have how it was broken down on this one. I think her question corrected me. Yeah, it's more a little bit more specific in that in terms of how it was voted to be used or how you can make that...
Yeah, it wasn't in like in minutes where high... Would be brought down. Each department had the money used.
You're talking about earmarked for?
Earmarked to be used.
I think she had understood that it had to be approved every year. But based on my understanding, you all had already did the budget.
Yeah, it was up on the...
But I do understand from the bond attorney that if you all wanted to go back and reallocate the fund, you all can vote on reallocation with them from my understanding.
Was it that?
Was that the remaining?
I think, Councilwoman, you were reading from wrong. I think she's looking for itemized amount. For example, the 1.6 million dollars that was spent on the stadium out there. And that breakdown, am I correct?
Yeah, I'm looking at it like a breakdown.
No, I have access to it, but that wasn't her question to me. So...
That's why I was trying to explain.
Do... Can I say? Can I say what I'm talking about? When I say, like in our budget, like for each department, there is so much money that was given from that bond. This is what I'm saying. The way I look at it. Like in each department, there was so much money given to each departments out of that 12 million dollars. Okay? What I'm saying is that when they use this money... When they use it. My question was that do they come back before the council? How they spend this money? Do the council know exactly how this money is being spent according to the way you have in your budget? Like you have a line item. Okay, so we use IT, for example. If IT has a line item on how this money is supposed to be spent and you have... Someone else is doing something else and it's not in the line item.
If you have someone else doing something, you're outsourcing.
I think, Councilwoman, can I just... Based on our conversation, let me just look a little clearer. It goes back to what the understanding was that every year... Like you do a budget every year. Even though we know we have pot of money every year is budgeted and approved back before council. What she's saying is that that might have been 2019 years ago, but do... Are we... Who's giving account that it still be spent in the way that it was initially established? Is it coming back to be done the same way? Or are you just continuing that same budget the same way for the past 10 years? That's what I ask.
Okay, let me ask you a question. The only money that would be left from that bond probably would be what? IT?
Finance.
Finance.
And maybe one or two little small amounts.
Can you give us that definition?
I had a maintained spreadsheet that was more understandable, more readable. But when my computer got taken away, that whole spreadsheet left. So I can give you the update and then there was something processed while I was out. But I can't give it to you in a... In a user-friendly, council-friendly format. I can request it from the bond attorney. It's kind of figured I can give you that updated file. But it's not broken down the way... See, it's easily interpreted for the council. Right, I can give you the la... A copy of the last one when we were giving that report. But I couldn't continue to give you spreadsheet because I didn't have that information, you know? Because you talked about a decade of information.
Hold on. It was Councilwoman Thomas. Did you finish up this one?
Yeah, I have one more question.
One more that was of the council?
Yeah. It's been on my mind because when you go back in your budget and you look... See, it was new to me that by me being here as the council, I had to do my own study. And the reason why I was asking Ms. Wade... See, they get mad with me because it was on my mind and I kept asking Ms. Wade some questions about in the budget, I was looking for something. When you say we using money and spending money in departments and if you got a line item that we did in the budget and if you stepped out of that line item and doing other things, I wanted to know how... How could they do that and not come before the council? To spend money like that? That was my concern.
Oh, Madam Treasurer, I wanna know, even if it's bond funds, if we're contracting with someone a decade later, is that supposed to come before the council?
Yes. It's all city funds. Whether it's from the general fund or bond fund, it's that belongs to the city.
So, bond is in its script or statement, all contracts come before the council. So even if we have bond money through IT for 20 years ago... You can't arbitrarily just decide we're gonna spend it. Contract with someone in the council, not nobody. Because it still has... The contract still has to be approved by the council. There has to be minutes reflecting it.
Right. And I... And that was gonna be a part of... Because we hadn't met since this issue came up that... That Councilwoman Thomas brought as a discovery. Thank you, Councilwoman. But that is an issue that we are dealing with related to IT and that I have requested copies of contract, but to no avail.
Yeah. Councilwoman Youngblood?
Yes, ma'am.
Go ahead. Come on.
Could you, Ms. Wade, lead up to our budgetary process? Give us a breakdown of how much bond funding is remaining and what category it was earmarked for? And once we get that, we can determine what needs to be done, if anything. And if anything not... I mean, if anything not needed, then we can take that money and ship it to where the needs are.
Like equipment? Like capital equipment?
Yes. Yeah, so let's look at that. Let's look at what funds available and what the current needs is. And if there's not a present need, then let's think about shipping it.
Because I think we only have about four departments, I think.
Well, what is...
But she... But she loves it.
Yeah, it's gonna be... It's gonna be determined about how much money.
How much is left, though? Yeah.
And what that department? Whether or not it's the priority.
Prioritizing the needs. Councilwoman Youngblood?
Thank you. When... Janie, I thought you were talking about, you know, we got a thing from Congresswoman Sewell about this infrastructure bond. I thought you were talking about...
I was gonna ask you something.
Okay. Yeah, I had seen it last week. And I thought that she was referring to that. And I made a kind of an offhand comment to my sweetmate over here. And I wanna ask Madam Treasurer something that is not, you know, pleasant to talk about, but we did know about this because we've all read and seen a lot about the infrastructure money that's coming down nationally. And one of the things that you can get money, like up to a million dollars for infrastructure projects, that we sure do need our infrastructure replaced. I mean, we need what we don't see replaced, which I've got another something I'm gonna have to put on hold a minute before this evening. So, Mr. President, I've gotta ask you to appoint some people to come and I'm gonna have to invite the council to come over to my house and look at something that I put out. I'm fixing to get killed in my backyard. But anyway, Madam Treasurer, are we gone? A lot of this infrastructure money that's coming down is coming down in the way of bond. So that's kind of...
And that's a good question that I don't have answered for yet because as of today, we still have not had our audit completed. And so we're getting ready to go into a new fiscal year. And I was told that I would have a draft of the financials. I hadn't gotten that yet, so I follow up with you tomorrow. Our bond rate, which is our credit rate, has decreased. I'm concerned that it may affect the increase again. What a lot of people don't know is it's just not... It's not just whether we have cash on hand in the bank that affects our bond rating. And I think I've handed to you all the S and P from previous years. But it's what's going on.
The environment.
Right, the environment, politics, the council... Layoffs, the stagnation and our ability to pay our bills when we said we couldn't pay our bills and bills got held up. All of those affect... All those things affect our credit rating. But it's just not just financial, but it's environmental. And the things that are happening in and around us. So when we're saying these things, it is very important that we proceed with caution, especially when you have a newspaper because they check all these things to our credit rating. But I do know that what will affect us is those layoffs. That's gonna have a large effect. If our bills not being paid in a timely manner when I was out, all of those will affect our credit rating. So we can all just hope. Because I think now we're downgrade to B for years. We were A up until, what, last year? So...
Uh-huh. I know while you were out, we had some real issues and I was told by some folks that... Unsolicited, I certainly didn't ask. I don't think it was my pleasure to, but I was... Was told, just told by some folks. That we were not bonded up in the financial business, that we weren't bonded up. And that one of the reasons was the layoffs. They were forcing me to do whatever we needed to do to put those people back to work and all that. But anyway, I wanted to see if it would be...
And it also affects our ability where we had an opportunity to get a 1% interest rate with USDA and a $50,000 rate. That affects us. Other things that we have to look at in a couple of years, we were having to look at defeating a bond and reissuing, possibly reissuing another bond and consolidate those in, what, probably by 2024, something like that. We gotta work hard to make things better because we're not... We're not gonna get the credit rating to do all those things.
Well, one of the things that we really need to take note of, we're accustomed to infrastructure. The money's coming down basically the grants. They're coming down through bond things. And that's something that's not good for us at this point in time. So that's one of the things I wanted to ask you. And we all need to be aware of that. So... And the mayor needs to be aware of that. So we need to do whatever we possibly can. We need to implore the... You know, we need to try to get these folks back.
Now, I mean, that's not addressed to you right now. But I just wanna say, when we talked about, like I said before, we've always had cash flow issues, right?
Sure.
It never affected... It never caused our bond rating to decrease because we still... Even though we... In turn, we struggled with, okay, what we have to pay. We still paid our bills in a timely manner. No one got laid off. Then we had other liabilities like the St. James Hotel. We have America, all those things. Now we're having issues where we have... I know something else I'll address. AmeriCorps is a grant program. You all know the reason we lost it the last time. We're going through the same issue. Usually we get about 103,000. It's been, what, nine months? And we have not drawn down a penny from the state. And there's a confusion as to who's at fault. I'm told from the Planning and Development Department that the state was having all kinds of problems. But when I talked, speak with Ms. Renika Farrar at the governor's office, she said, "No, it's the city that compliance issue there is." And then they're drawn down. I have not seen since I've been back. I know I'm signing off on the financial process. I've made several requests to the Planning and Development Department to have the drawdown package. They have not given it to me, which is an indication that there is something that's incorrect. And you all are aware why we lost it the last time. But we're looking like we're headed down that road again.
Is there anything any of us can do?
You can call the mayor and ask him to kind of put an urgency on it with planning and development.
Uh, one more thing and I will... Can I ask you to do this? And I know that you have, but I'm real concerned about when the times that you were out about these payments and stuff. Can you check and make sure that all the bond payments and everything is like it's supposed to be and supposed to have been? And let us know about that. You know, maybe not tomorrow night, but next time. Because, you know, we need to be doing some things and making some plans. I'm trying to get more construction.
Oh, Councilwoman, let me follow some up on your questions. That drawdown, you used to do it 690 days. You could do it like 30 days.
No, you've always been able to do it 30 days. We were doing it 690 days. I didn't... I wasn't aware of it as to what it was. So you're supposed to do it more.
They can cite you for that.
But there's some other...
There's a lot of...
Some other compliance. I'm not really sure of the details of it because I was...
Hold on. Councilwoman... Councilwoman Benjamin?
So my hand was up a while ago when we were talking about contracts. But I have two more questions since we have talked about the rating decrease in AmeriCorps. But my hand was up when we were talking about the bond breakdown. Call it breakdown. Would you please, if you have it in your office, the contracts that have gone through the IT department, including the contract for software? Because what you needed 10 years ago, you don't need now. You don't have to continue it. It's like you've gotten some off your checklist. It doesn't mean that it carries over to the next year because you don't need it now because you got it the year before. So these contracts include human resources and they also include the software and server, those particular contracts. So if you do it and if it's in your office and available to you, would you bring it? And if it's not in your office, it should be. Would you go ahead and request it from the mayor's office? And concerning the rating decrease, our credit report. Let's just call it a credit report. A lot of what you sound like is saying involves misinformation and it may not be a way that we can fix it, but misinformation. Let's just say the layout, the big lie. That was the biggest lie that was ever told. And you came back and you gave us information that was contrary to what was given to us when you were out. We had to go on when you were out what was given to us. And so now with you speaking to the auditors and not just the layout, but I'm calling that one the big one. I'm just calling that one the big one. And the USDA rate, we could have gotten a USDA loan for 1%, but we decided not to go that route. We did something different. All of those things, and you're talking with them. Are they considering, taking into consideration that we were without you and that the information that was given to us was the information that we had to go on? Is there even an area, a gray area that they... That they say, "Hey, we gotta consider the fact that there was no finance person"?
Well, when it initially... When we initially got the downgrade, they talked about the legal cases, which included...
Yes, that too.
But I think this year will be the update to our credit rating. So it will have to be... It'll probably be a part of the conversation because everything, all the environment as a whole is considered. So I'm sure that's gonna be an issue to consider. And we will be penalized for the absence of not having a credit.
No, I thought so.
Yeah, it's not gonna be that this is a credit report. They're not gonna be a free pass for it.
Right, not so, so, I really don't know how to ask what I'm trying to ask, but I'm trying to ask. In, in your discussions, will you all be discussing that?
Yes, that's the conversation.
You all will have a conversation about that and concerning that and then it'll be up to the auditors, how they will report it back.
It'll be up to the, uh, credit, um, company, how they will report it.
But you'll make sure all that is written?
Yeah, all that is in writing.
All that is in writing and it's written in.
Right.
Okay. And, and concerning, um, AmeriCorps, um, I'm confused about the, the, the whole planning and development department. I haven't, I haven't seen Mr. Thompson, but that doesn't mean anything because I'm not here all the time. Is he still with us?
Yeah, but he's still on board.
Okay, he's still on board. So who is the compliance man?
Well, what's supposed to be is Teresa is the compliance, but the way it's set up is like she's running AmeriCorps. You can't, you're not supposed to comply.
Okay, so that's, that's enough without having to go into audits. So we're back at a compliance issue is what you're saying. And, and since you've been back, well, before you came back, there was no drawdown done.
Not.
Uh, who can start that process tomorrow?
They, they're supposed to be working on it as we speak here with Thompson and his government.
So, Mr. President, would you please get Mr. Thompson here, uh, tomorrow if we can, so he can make a report on.
I go to the mayor?
The, um, yeah, that's why I mean, the whole, ask the mayor process. If you can get him here so, um, we can report on not only AmeriCorps, but other things. And the whole planning and development department has me, it has me vexed.
Right.
Uh, it just has me vexed. There's a lot of money that could be applying for different things to, cause that's part of planning and development. Yeah.
I mean, for part of Councilwoman Jackson, also, if they are not in compliance, they have to do something like a correctional arrangement. Have they, anybody talked to them, I mean?
What I, from what I understand is that last week they were supposed to, um, meet with Veronica Fair, uh, Renika Fair from the governor's office. But I have not heard any updates on it. All I heard is we're working on, we're working. And I mean, I've heard that for a while now, so I can't really tell you what the update. She was, she indicated to me is that she, cause I told, I explained to her that it was corroborated by two of the city employees, that it was, the issue was with the governor's office. She said, no, that's not the way it is. She said, we've had, we've had changes, but it shouldn't affect. It would have affected, um, the money being drawn down.
Cause they have those options that you have to, being compliant with all of them.
Right, there was issues that they were having and she sent it back and was telling them those are things they need. But then, like I said, usually with the drawdowns, I've been here since May, um, in April, May, June, July, I haven't signed off on the drawdown. So I'm not sure who signed off on the financial component of it. So that right there is what, about four months and then you have, um, the time five months prior to these. So I'm not, I'm not completely clear.
If you don't do that drawdown by the end of the fiscal year, is that a loss for us, sir?
Um, I, I would think so, but I'm not sure. See, this never happened before.
I don't think we can lose it. We just need to find a good property. We need some adequate compliance. We need somebody to tell us what's going on.
That's right.
Councilwoman.
This way, how many years is that AmeriCorps grant? Is it one-year grant, a three-year grant?
Three years.
Yeah, I know, it's been three years.
What, what?
I think this is up for renewal.
Right, it's up for renewal.
So, so this is our third year of the thing, right?
And it's important that when, when you do renew, all the information is correct. That's the problem that we had the last time. That the documents were not correct.
How, how much money, um, is it each year that we're supposed to be reimbursed?
Um, for the past couple of years, it ranged from one thirty to one forty thousand, one hundred and forty thousand, depending on, on the numbers. Right, what's, what, what's taking place and what's been.
It's a hundred and forty-three thousand.
I don't know because I had, they haven't given us the whole number. It's probably.
Just off the top of my head, make some, um, what, what this is saying, we're, we're, we've not recouped, we've not been reimbursed. Money that we spent. We spent a hundred and forty-three thousand for the program. We haven't been reimbursed and.
Right.
Are you, and said that we were submitting things late?
Right, right. They were being submitted late and then there's some kind of compliance issue.
So, so it's not just the, the financial component of it, that is there also with this grant that you have to actually submit or the paperwork? Um, that you say what you're doing in the community?
I'm assuming, yes, but, um, Hillary could tell you more about that because I'm not familiar with that part.
And you're saying this is not the first time this has happened? So we've, we've lost this grant before?
Yes.
And we've lost this grant before. We're on the verge of losing it again. But who is saying?
I don't know if we're on the verge of losing it, but I know that there are some compliance issues, some issues with getting everything. I don't know the details.
But you know we have collected a hundred and forty-three thousand dollars?
I do know that much.
And they didn't bring this information to you, you were able to.
Well, I've, I've asked about it since I've been there and I've, since I came back and the promise made that I would get it. They're gonna send it downstairs. I'm about to get it, but it's never come.
So, right, so you went to them from the financial side, say, hey, where's our reimbursement? They didn't come to you and they're just waiting.
So I've been asking since I've gotten back. So then I said, well, give me the number to the state because I need to know what's going on. Because I keep hearing that it's the state, the state is shut down, they moved, they relocated, they had to turn around. I'm like, well, I need to talk to somebody to just understand why they're holding our money up. And so that's when I made contact with this guy.
She said, it's in fact not their issue.
It's not their issue and, and I had to explain to her that two of the city employees corroborate that it's a state issue. And she said, no, that's not the case.
Get it here tomorrow.
And we got, we got, um, going forward, that may not even be asked us about. Cause I mean, that makes us look bad across the state and the government's office. Then you call and say, hey, well, they say it's your fault.
Yeah, I just wanted to know why we haven't gotten our money.
That does not look good.
One of many things that makes us look bad across the state.
One thing we don't like to do is to go around and just helping and serving a lot of people. Let's find out what the problem is and let's get on topic. Councilwoman, uh, Thomas.
Oh, you, uh, uh, can a woman go to?
You can touch your hand up.
Oh, no, I'm talking about.
All right, let's go, make some questions, all right?
The, the other one?
Uh, outstanding.
Okay, the other one now, I'll give this in my, uh, uh, report.
Is that about one hundred?
Give it in my report.
That's number four. You did number three already?
No, I'm down to, uh, I'm down to number, uh, number three.
Oh, I'm, no, my.
I, you know, you know, you told me the report about we have a report base.
Oh, that could be a hundred.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I typed it up for you. Okay, all right, okay.
I typed.
Okay, well, let, let, you say you typed it up, so, cause he said, no, I can't do this, so.
Yeah, it's done.
Okay, it's done in my.
So you move forward.
Okay, okay, all right.
This way.
Um, the police department have a stack of outstanding, um, bills for, uh, vehicle repair and maintenance and, um, building, um, building repair maintenance. That, um, in order to, it'll probably need a budget adjustment and I was wondering if I could email it to the budget just to put on the same agenda.
Please, thank you.
Do you know what the total is, this one?
Uh, it's about eleven thousand three hundred seventy-six dollars for, um, vehicle repair maintenance. Eleven hundred and about eleven ninety for building repair maintenance, just like fifty-five dollars.
Also too, chief, uh, did a surplus, I mean, chief bringing it out today about a surplus about the police cars. Uh, we already had a resolution, but it was some additional cars that he needed to be added. So I gave him a copy of the resolution that was submitted prior to, um, him coming on. And so what we probably need to do is just go ahead and do another resolution and add them other surplus, I believe, move forward with it.
I saw a lot of cars added to the game, um, um, a lot of vehicles sitting inside the game now that's not, that are not used yet. Are those some of the, uh?
Maybe this one.
The vehicles are re, are re, uh, surplus?
Yes, ma'am. I told him just to cross check on the ones that was submitted prior to, uh, his companies. So, uh, he's gonna add some additional ones, some of the ones that he, uh, submitted solidly, we already voted on, so.
Is that the whole, is this the, or is this?
This was the whole, this was for the list that, uh, chief cars submitted.
Plus bring?
No, we haven't submitted.
Oh, that's just cars?
Just cars.
Okay, you're gonna bring plus bring?
Yes, ma'am. Oh, he went today to look at it and, um, had that type of test topic.
Now, that, that amount will let be allocated towards the person who's being moved to pay.
Plus the additional.
Coming in doing another version, Mr. President, just a minute, the current one, they add that list too?
That's all I'm saying. We're just gonna have to add some of the additional ones to it, yeah.
And you bring it back?
I'll bring it back, yes, I'm ready. But I just gave him a copy of it so he can just go ahead. Now, some of them, we probably added some of the vehicles on his list, so he can, he can worry about just cross reference.
Yeah, but I thought you were saying.
No, 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 we'll just add it to, to the list. All right, Councilwoman Thomas.
Yes, they add, while you're talking about that, they also, the officer asked, can, before you get rid of the car, they wanted to know, can they get the, you know, some of the equipment already in there that they can use?
That probably a problem.
Oh, thank you.
Please, if you got anything, it's far.
And equipment in that strip, man. Everything is with exhibit taken out.
That's what they said they need. Okay, and there's one more, one more question I wanted to ask, Ms. Wade. Ms. Wade, remember back years, some months ago, you told us that, uh, there was some, uh, and then recently, there was some, uh, money that was due to the city. Have those people paid those debts yet?
From the employees?
Yes.
Um, at the time, I think there was, um, there were outstanding. One, I verified that did get paid and there's one that's still a current employee that has not paid.
But can you find, uh, question? Well, that current employee, uh, that owes the city money, if we owed it, we had to pay it. So she, uh, whoever it is, they need to pay the money. Cause we've been counting, I've been, I've been counting the months, how long that been?
I've sent certified letters. They were returned. I've had, had letters, had, hand delivered, returned. I've sent an email. They, it was returned and said, stop harassing them. So I've done my due.
Mr. President, can we get the attorney to be involved in this? Look at the legal ramifications. Have him send a letter to that employee?
Well, uh, can I say that it's going to conflict, um, in a sense that that person manages personnel? Deals with personnel, just like.
But that person don't handle the attorney?
Attorney, the country.
Attorney is the one that.
It's not a conflict between the mayor and.
That's right. So I would, I would think the attorney would get involved in this, send that employee a letter, not ask him, but demand it.
Mm-hmm. He's aware. He's aware.
Well, well, you're not gonna be aware, but then when you go legal with people, it's basically.
Well, that was the point of me making him aware so he, so it could go legal.
Well, I think, I think this council can give him that directive to go ahead and give that letter to that employee, indicate him there, um, amount of money that they rightfully owe the city and what the gratification is gonna be. Is there no responsibility by them, him or her? I don't know. But I do think if our attorney will get involved, that's.
All right, Councilwoman.
And Ms. Wade, have we got our other money back?
No. Um, everybody, um, all, any employees or anything involving money has, it was only one that we could not recruit. And that person since moved to the state, I've sent a letter, uh, to PNC, cause this was a PNC issue. And, and, uh, I sent an email and I had got that response. I followed up with them. If not, that amount might just have to be written.
So we did get our other money back from the.
From any, anybody else that had outstanding. That was taken before that, that letter even went out. It was, it was awesome.
I guess. When Ms. Wade got back, and she started reconciling a lot of finances with the city, that's when she discovered that issue. And, uh, I was one of the people that was involved in that. What happened was, uh, because the direct deposit was not received in a timely manner, there was a hard check issued to me and some other people. Am I correct, Ms. Wade?
Yes, right.
And then later on, that there was a charge to, uh, the city for an additional amount, which meant that she had a card. I would've got paid twice, cause I never would've carded. I'm just running my household spending money. But when she called and my wife was in charge of my finances, went and got on the phone and called the bank and either, and traced them back. That's when we verified that what Ms. Wade was telling us was the truth. And I immediately paid back and, and, uh, paid how much money? I mean, I hear.
I'm not sure, um, for the record, yours was not in there outstanding because you had gotten it resolved. Uh, but the two that, uh, that she was referring to, we had taken care of, so I, I didn't even regret that she was.
I just want, of a council to know, some of this problem, it was, it wasn't just that one person. It was multiple people that were involved. And I think we would send everybody's two financial obligations, it's just one person. Am I correct?
That's correct.
All right, Councilwoman Thomas, access the part of the bill, I think we.
We got them.
Uh, I, if you don't pay this down, if you remember recall, uh, three weeks ago at the last council meeting, Asma came before us and, um, we seemed to like, um, what they had to say and said we're gonna look at it at the budget process, um, there to the root. That's recommended by the leading municipalities that Councilwoman Thomas and I, um, saw at a conference. And, um, we brought back here during our, uh, before our budget process, sorry, to, so that the council can look at, um, whether we would like to, um, budget them and consider their services going forward. Where after, um, our meeting the next morning, I got a chance to speak with her and I addressed all those concerns, um, which included everyone having the opportunity to, um, go through and look through their award and making sure that it was a fair process across the board of how the grants, um, move forward. So she suggested that I, um, bring before the council, um, something that she had mentioned in her package and that you see having packaged is in there. The one-year grant strategy, uh, which they call, um, SOAR. It's, it's an acronym, SOAR, Strengths, Opportunities, Aspirations and Results. Um, that's, um, analysis or assessment of our needs. And through that assessment, they will be able to report to us, um, and provide us with suggestions on what they think would, um, be the things that we should apply for in the, the year coming and, um, where we can get those grants from, through, be it, uh, private or public funds. And, um, so I, she asked, I think back before the council, is that cost is seventy-five hundred dollars, um, but it's a year-long assessment. We're gonna continue to do that. And then it's not based on what you always say, one person and one award thinking or looking or asking for it to be. So this is, this is plan that, that they have assessed and they brought back before the council that we approved. And then based on the plan that we approved, that's how they prioritize the grants. Um, I called the president, I was looking at, um, trying to get, um, some discretionary funds to come up with this amount. He asked me to ask our treasurer to look at special projects, but might, because this would be deemed a special project. And, um, so I spoke with our treasurer today and she said there may be some funding there, but she's not sure how it's allocated. It's approximately, she said twenty-nine thousand dollars that's still budgeted. Yes, ma'am.
Um, I'll tell you what, I would, I would be, this, the package, it says starting October first, that would be the new fifty-year money. I would be happy to kick in a good healthy chunk of discretionary for this. Um, I am not typically for paying, we had a real bad experience with paying a grant, um, writing company. But we paid them a lot, lot, lot more money than this and tried, we just, we, we really took a big hit because they didn't offer us. But anyway, I, I've done a little bit of checking on this word, on this scale and I have, have gotten some good, good things. Some people said, you know, like her, she's not what we needed, you know, at that time, but she's, you know, I've heard good things about her. Um, but I tell you what, I'm thinking, but because of the infrastructure money that's coming down, a lot of it is gonna come like Congresswoman Sewell sent with the bond. But I suspect through the Department of Transportation, through the Department of, I can't think right now. There, there will be some grant funds and I'm just afraid for, for the next one year, we've got what we're going to have. And we don't, we don't have what we need to write these kind of grants. And we're not, it's, it's not gonna come out of thin air. So I, I would say, you know, I would be in favor of this and I would contribute as much as I possibly can because that is a pretty important issue. Cause, because this is the time to go, the, the focus on, on the federal funding is on infrastructure. And Lord, we don't need to miss the voting again. We had it, we had it, there an opportunity one time to get our infrastructure replaced. We don't need to miss the voting again.
Yes, ma'am. Well, and, um, actually these funds, um, the seventy-five hundred, she's trying to complete by September thirtieth. Um, they were sixty thousand to five thousand dollars a month, was looking at the, um, October one. And in this plan, she told you how many grants they would write per, um, month. And I had, I had councilmen, um, or others to express to me their concerns about going with grant, um, funders and paying them upfront. You know, I wasn't, um, with the council, with the councilwoman. We've had those issues in the prior, but what I. But what I, what I said, um, to her is that I don't think the, um, people that we actually, um, contracted with the last time was league recommended. Um, this person actually spoke at a state Alabama League of Municipalities conference. The, the, um, the league employee that, um, spoke in our legal department that, um, actually, um, introduced her and read her bio, said, um, after, before she came up and after she came up, if a city is looking for grants, this is who you should go, go with. If they're partnering with the city in this, in the, um, the league, in the League of Municipalities, the, um, our governing body or guiding body, um, is recommending this, you know, or this, this company, I think it's someone that we should look at. And, you know, I know that we've had bad experiences, and she has said, and as you stated, that you've actually talked to people that have said, you know, um, some things about it, I've, I've done the same. But I was very impressed because the league, they offer, have oftentimes, they have people come up and speak, um, but they don't oftentimes say, "This is league recommended," or "This is someone that we think you all should look at and partner with." And so that spoke problems to me, actually, I'll bring, bring in, um, someone at the next council meeting, if I can get it approved by the president, that is also someone that is partnered with the league, that they've, um, saying that there is league recommended. And so if we're in a position that the league says that we can partner with someone that they believe in, then I think we're in a better position, cause they checked them out, they validated them. And so I'm hopeful that we can consider, um, doing this and putting forth the money, the seventy-five hundred dollars to get them to do the assessment. I didn't realize, or I would've brought it, um, before then, she sent it the day after our last meeting, but it was, of course, three weeks before our next meeting. But she asked me at that time, "What were the concerns of the council?" And I said, "Well, everyone seemed as if they were really full of, we're gonna look at it during our budget season, but these are their concerns, and you all's concerns were that we'll be looking at one more, we'll be asking for one thing, and there wouldn't be a concerted effort for the things of Selma." And so this, this puts us in that position. I, I'm hopeful, um, Madam Treasurer, um, were you able to talk to Henry at all today? Or do we need to, do what you, do we need to look at discretionary or how to?
I, um, as I stated to you earlier today, I called him, and he was in a meeting, so I couldn't, and reach out to him. And I also sent him an email, so he was in need most of the day, so I had, he had had an opportunity to respond.
Would anyone be interested in, I know you said you have some money next year. What I, what I'm saying is, they wanna be started October one, um, writing down grants, not, not assessing, because you know, the grant starts, the cycle starts, like many of them, like it's gonna start like, um, December, January. Um, and so I, I just wanted to see if you all, if you've been interested in doing the assessment. If you're not interested in doing the assessment, I tell them, "No, we just look at going with them next year." But if you're interested in doing the assessment, that's something we need to do prior to getting them to write the grants. Because if we get them to write, write the grants for us, they may write something that we don't need. They may write us a splash pad, and we need a. And we need a new, we actually need a new, um, you know, what did the, uh, a new fire truck. You know, so I, I don't wanna think about what we believe they need. I don't want them to write us a new tra, uh, compactor, and we can afford that. I want them to write based on their assessment of what, what we should be writing for. The greatest need and the greatest expense for the city.
What you did, so you were gonna try to have her come before the council?
She came last, last work session.
I'm sorry, I was, I was.
She was, she was here on July twentieth.
I'm sorry. I guess you could follow up with Mr. Thompson, Ms. Wade. Anything else, Councilwoman?
No, I just, I would, I would like for you all to, um, consider this, if you please roll it over.
Okay.
And, and if you, if you don't want it, if, if you don't think we can find the funds, or you wanna, um, look for the funds, just let me know, I'm not pushing for it, either way. But I, I don't feel like we should go into a sixty thousand dollar contract, not going what this director calls.
Yes, ma'am. All right, Councilwoman.
Okay, TNA, for those who don't know, they, these are elementary school age young people who won the showdown in, um, physical Florida. Um, they won the championship, so I'd like to, um, um, recognize them tomorrow. Um, these are elementary school age, and these are girls, um, basketball.
Yeah, they're girls.
My grandson played for the TNA.
The boys got a long way too, they, they, they went far.
John Beagman, he was the honorable, big face on the team.
The boys went far as well, um, and they may be here tomorrow, and then the, um, five of both. I have to get Miss Dylan on number seven, to see if she, if she's feeling better. If she's feeling better, uh-huh, I, I, I will.
Okay.
Um, number eight is an announcement, so I'll do that tomorrow.
Yes, ma'am. All right, thank you, Councilwoman. Uh, Councilwoman Youngblood.
Um, I wanted to see if there was some way that I could find out. We, I know that we have, have paid a lot, and a lot of time was spent on the installation, or the fire truck. Uh, I think Sweet gave you and made one right, it's on, um, installing security cameras. But I wanted to find out how many were actually installed, and if for as long as I have had a request to install security cameras at War II, if any of my War II cameras were installed. I'd made requests, I'd made follow-ups, and I'd made follow-ups to the follow-ups, and I'd make begging, lying, pleading. You know, prostrate myself to the follow-up, follow, to follow. But anyway, I wanted to see if out of all the time that was spent on that, and perhaps that was done. And I, and I need to get, I've got, they brought, I, I just had to go and get three on the back, because my neighborhood association at Lincoln Place went on and put theirs up in their neighborhood. So I wanted to go ahead and get the other seven cameras back and just get it put up myself. Get contractors to put it up myself, cause people, you know, I've got them, and then they've been just sitting around. I need to go and get them back, hoping that they're still where they're supposed to be, where they are. But anyway, and I don't know how to check on that.
Well, I guess what you pay out is just probably, uh, the acquired and the man, or the security. Cause that's why the inventory looks, it's only six and four.
Okay. And, and an ungodly number of hours and time was spent installing security cameras. An ungodly number of time.
A minute.
A minute.
I would start checking that first, you know, that would be my first line of defense.
That's the difference, or the first seventy-five, we bought the win, so, good luck.
Councilwoman.
Yeah, all those cameras, of course.
Oh, yeah.
Councilwoman, but are you, were you finished? Were you, were you finished?
Yes. No, that's, oh, wait a minute, no, no, I'm not, I'm sorry. And I think, Janie, did you, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Thomas, did you wanna talk to something relative to the security cameras? Cause I've got something else to.
I also think it's a different topic.
It's a, um, bringing it on the air.
All right, um, now you can go ahead, cause I, before we leave, I need you to bring something up, so.
Okay, so, I, I, I understand now, where, where, I, I understand more clearly now why, um, Councilwoman Thomas wanted me to bring up the quarterback club. It is in her, uh, public building report on tomorrow, you'll get that in public buildings, but we need to bring it up tonight, so we consider it for tomorrow's, uh, consent. The, uh, the quarterback club gives a lot into the community concerning scholarships and funding and all that. And, um, so it has been proposed that they, they pay the, the, the quote-unquote, rate of five hundred. We're proposing in the recommendation on tomorrow, so we need to drop it on you tonight, that they, uh, that they stay steady with what they've been paying for this building. And also tomorrow, Councilwoman Thomas will tell you about some, uh, comparison. But, but for now, what's important is that we consent, if we can, that they pay the, um, this, the same amount that they've been paying, Ms. President. They paid numerous, uh, numbers of scholarships. Uh, we had, two of the representatives came to our public building meetings. They have a fund match with Auburn University in Alabama with a hundred thousand dollars and eight, eighty thousand dollars respectively. Uh, and that goes back out into the young people in Selma County. So we're, not only is the building not up to par, uh, but we are, be, because, um, you can really deem them a partner with us, because they're helping with scholarships, that they remain paying. They're not asking for a free building, they're asking that they remain paying the same thing.
Okay, that's for.
And I just probably, so we're getting consent.
Okay.
We'd like to share with.
How about other organizations, just, just quarterback, or?
I have another one.
That's the only one that presents, so I don't know.
Yeah, I want to present another one to you. Or, you know, every year we have this, um, this pro, uh, they, they meet every year. We're dealing with the, uh, the drug program, you know, we have people that come in out of town. And I want to ask you the question, our buildings where we have these, uh, they're like education programs that we have. And last year I went, I took part as a council, uh, representative in this program, cause you know, it helps for the city itself. And anytime we have like government buildings, I'm gonna say government programs, do we, we, we're supposed to not charge those people on? President Boyd?
Yeah.
So that's why I wanted to ask you, because, uh, yes, we have another, uh, program that'll be coming up.
Is that Councilwoman Jackson's apartment?
Yes, that's why I wanted to ask.
We still have that offering.
Okay, one of this, oh, we did?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, I just.
Yeah, yeah, we did.
Oh, okay.
They don't, that's why.
Okay.
Yeah, they won't let, uh-huh, but tell them we did, and not you.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, and, uh, and I want this, the council to know, I've been, I've been digging a little bit on this. Uh, everybody, I think everybody was personal at the time. You remember when, uh, we got the fee for the buildings that went up? We did not, those are, those were not our fees that we set. It came from the mayor office. Now, I remember us doing the changing in the contract, but for, we did not vote to agree. Did we, I'm looking, I, I don't remember us voting to agree to have these fees that was given to us. I don't, I don't remember, I know I'm chair, I don't remember us voting on that. I remember us changing the, the policy. We changed the contract, but we did not, uh, vote to.
The fee.
To the fee.
The fee increase.
Cause the whole schedule.
Yes, the whole, the whole schedule fee we had, we never voted on that, we changed the contract. And what has happened to us is that, uh, the contract, uh, the fee contract is out there. It's being given to the, the renters who want to rent the building. And, uh, they wasn't giving the right contract, that we changed the language. The quarterback gave us the old stuff that they had given them. So, uh, I would like for, it's like, we'll be not recognized in what we change in our contract. They're giving out the old contract, plus the, uh, about your security too. We, we agreed to put all that in there, but it was not given to them. So I gave them the actual contract that we had, uh, voted on. So, uh, we need to make a decision, uh, if we did, uh, we, I know we did not vote on the fee that was being charged. Because right now we have a, a status that we don't have any employees in there. And these people have to go in and clean up, do everything, get paid for the insurance, pay for the security, pay, pay, pay for everything. So, uh, I had asked, I don't know why, that our attorney wouldn't, I, I called President Boyd and asked him, "Could we, uh," trying to get the word out. Could we not, uh, could we, uh, how would you say it? Uh, we not use the, the fee, because we never voted on the fee? Could we continue, since we don't have employees?
Yeah, I mean, just, just revert back to the fees that we never voted on?
You got the minutes on there, you got the minutes on there.
You have the minutes on?
No, well, I, well, it's a problem now, you know, uh, well, I asked Ms. Wade the clerk. I know we did vote on that, I know we voted on the change to contract, but we did vote it on the, on the, the fee.
So that, if they were, the fees are.
Not increased.
At not increased?
But they, they're using what's happening. They're, they're using the one that, 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 that the mayor gave, gave us.
And when their attorney drafted that, that's why I asked if we have the minutes, the attorney.
Are you asking that we just put in tomorrow, put in the consent tomorrow, that we just repeal?
Yes.
Any fee back to what the council had previously. That the council had previously approved.
Then I'm looking for some refunds, I've never paid that, I think we did a check with.
Yeah, that's what I worried about.
For Ms. Johnson, I would promise.
As of today.
As of today, effectively.
Right.
I need, that's what I was saying, because, uh, um, that's been, and, and the issue is that people renting the building, they're spending a lot of money, and we don't have anybody over there to not even do. I put a letter in everybody's box that we, I sent to the mayor, requesting that, uh, a lot of the people that are renting the buildings now, saying that the buildings are not clean, which we know that we don't have anybody in there to, to keep it clean and, and kept up. So I, I placed one in everybody's box, uh, some of the things, so we look it over and see what you, what do you think.
Well, I was gonna ask Ms. Wade, are we with, are we up to the end?
I'm sorry, are we?
Are we up to the end, Ms. Wade?
President Boyd.
Well, basically, uh, from my understanding, Ivy and, we're just supposed to get together next week, expect or something like that. It's been going on and on and on, but we're nailing down closer now, moving forward with the council. Okay, if we could, add them, put a rush on that, because.
I did.
We've already contacted the company, we.
I did.
Hopefully that they would be the ones that would come in and give us the professional job we're looking for.
They called today.
On?
They called today.
Yeah, I just let them know that we just gonna follow our guidelines, and, and that we kinda falling short on that, but we're gonna kinda put a rush on it.
Yeah, I, I told, I told, uh, when we met on Thursday.
Appreciate it.
It just needed, like, a part of it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Councilwoman.
Okay, I need to ask the council one more thing before tomorrow night. You know, we have a contract that, uh, the Dallas Academy building, um, is four, uh, four thousand, I'm gonna say it's what, forty-five thousand? And, uh, we only have a check for the insurance of forty thousand. Uh, we will have to come up with, before I put it on the floor to a vote, I need to ask this council, will we be able to come up with the five thousand to get, to finish the, the Dallas Academy, uh, acquisition? Do we have money?
Yes.
We will?
You will.
Okay, and let me ask you this, Ms. Youngblood. Will we be able to put the, have you got that amount we need for the cages there?
I don't have the amount, yes.
Okay, all right. But I just want, before we move forward with this putting it in, I wanted to be able, so we can put all of it together, keep them from somebody else coming back in.
I know, yeah.
Okay, all right.
So the five thousand, I mean, what, five thousand dollars?
Yeah, we need five.
I was deducting, wrong.
And it's deductible, yeah.
Yeah, we need to come up with, they charge forty-five thousand.
And you gotta check the forty thousand.
Yes.
We need to, mostly our five thousand. So what we have for that account from all these, uh?
It's with the, uh, the, well, we used, the last time we used our all-lease with, uh, swimmer building, remember? Is that, I'm gonna ask you, is that the five?
It may not be deductible, it just may be the total cost.
It's the total cost. Forty-five thousand is the total cost.
Right, and you gotta check the forty thousand.
There, I'm telling you, the, the, the insurance gave us forty thousand, but the company that's doing it charged forty-five thousand.
Oh, okay, so it's just so much time, it's a waste. This is costume, costume, but he, you know, my.
Oh, it's the cover that they give. Oh, okay.
So, so, wait, 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 wait. I got, I mean, so he got the other ticket for forty thousand.
Yes.
Forty thousand.
And he charged forty-five thousand to do the work?
Do we have the?
Do we have a deduct, that's what?
They already done taking care, that's why we got the check for forty thousand.
Insurance, and the city paid the five thousand.
If I deduct.
Our five thousand and the forty thousand, make forty-five thousand. Our five thousand and the forty thousand, make forty-five thousand, we responsible for five thousand.
Yes, that's what I was asking you.
Right, you said, I think, yeah, that's right, but we responsible for five thousand.
We responsible for eighty-five thousand.
She said, she said we maybe find something in buildings and.
Buildings, okay.
Mid buildings and make.
Yeah, uh, public buildings has, um, but the bond, bonds available for, for budget repair maintenance, I mean, building repair maintenance. So perhaps that difference just come from out there, that's what normally happens.
So I'm gonna ask you about it, okay.
And not you, okay, yeah.
And then we have to finish, this is the last part, the last part of the building is, President Boyd, you remember I told you, we needed to talk to, uh, Tim Coke? You remember when we, when we first started on the, uh, the Dallas Academy building, we asked someone to come in and clean it out before they started doing the repair?
Yes.
Okay, we had a problem now, that, uh, in the insurance, it was not included. Was that a separate bill that they got paid when they cleaned, they went in and cleaned out the Dallas Academy building?
I think they had to do that prior to going in.
Yeah, but did they get paid, they get, they got paid, uh, it was a different company.
I think it was, I can't remember.
So they got paid diff, they got paid sep, okay, well, Surfer, they came in and cleaned their whole building out, and they removed a carpet off the floor. So now the flooring doesn't have, they didn't put back, uh, they didn't put anything back, so when the, the other construction came in and started working, it was not in the contract that they had to replace the flooring, put this, you know, tile or whatever back down on the floor, so how would we go by that, doing that?
I mean, who signed off and said, who signed off and said? This president, no, man, and that, I'm not, I'm not saying, anytime a insurance gonna come in, I tell them, I tell them, they gonna miss some, we may have to put in what they call supplement. Uh, with additional damage that they hadn't seen, so we may have to call them back and let them know that they left the floor off and send another estimate in to them so they can have that taken care of.
And when, and that's what, uh, we talked to Jared Pete, and Jared Pete told us to get in, 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 uh, contact with, uh, his name is Tim, uh, Cokelet. And, uh, I told President Boyd that we need to call him, I've been calling, but, uh, we can't get no answer, go to voicemail. So, uh, we probably need to call that company and see if they come back and.
They might do it, I know that's.
Right, correct, that's what it is.
Cause it's not in.
They'll get everything before it's around, it'll be the damage that you're gonna get.
So, that's why I said we wanted to be through with this, uh, before, uh, October, before we turn our committee over. Again, we need to, that building, we need to be through with that building before October.
Okay, well, if, you know, I mean, who else, maybe we can ask Ms. Pete, did he contact her?
Okay. Yeah, we, cause we, after a while, we'll be out, I'll be out of that committee seat, I would like to, because two, two people have been in there, councilman. No, we don't wanna try, we wanna try to clean up this, and let's finish up that, she has it, and I have it.
Ask Ms. Pete, did he contact her?
Okay. All right, thank you.
Uh, since, since we, um, brought the line items that were not being used, that's, that's for you, Madam Councilwoman. Um, they're not being used, um, Madam Treasurer. Mister President, um, my lawn service care guy, who is actually Councilwoman Thomas, I just met him, uh, did a wonderful job. And I am, um, I need more work done and work for, as I'm sure all the works do. And since Public Works is not cutting, and we still have that money in the area of Public Works where they would have been doing, we are actually doing ourself, and that money is available in the area of Public Works, so we're gonna do the job for Public Works. I need a little more money to finish cutting those areas that need to be cut. Uh, so I wanna drop this on, on you, uh, how y'all feel about that, um, because, um, wonderful job done, wonderful job done. But it's not a complete job, so I'm not, now out of the, the little five thousand dollars. And I had to give like a thousand or so or more to do a couple of ditches, uh, my ditches are back, uh, Councilwoman, sure, I don't know about yours. My, my ditches have now come back from last year, so, uh, but I'm able to use, uh, what Attorney Dunn said that we can use for the ditch part of it. So, I, 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 I need to finish the job, Council, um, Councilwoman Wade. Madam Treasurer.
We need a side cover in the worst way. If there ain't a way possible that we can find some money to get a side cover, going out of the area.
Isn't it?
It ain't no tractor to be able to go down, we need a side cover to be able to cut back. I called Eric Fells, uh, from the, uh, county, and see if they come back to do what they did some time ago. They said both of their side covers down, even the areas around, but we need to find money to purchase us a side cover.
It's in Public Works, darling, that, that piece of equipment, that money, but money for that piece of equipment is in Public Works.
Can we purchase, can we purchase one?
You're gonna use it, you're gonna cut it.
We need to have someone, we need to get someone, I mean, the, well, I'm saying, the one he got is, that, uh, about Rick, something, something, Mark, Rick, put something on there. We need someone on that side of the, the bench on rubber, the grass gonna meet each other.
Well, and to your point, we can, we can allocate money to get the equipment fixed, but he can't put nothing, he may not get a way on track.
But we gotta get somebody.
Well, I mean, we gotta.
We just allocate the funds.
Well, we gotta get, he's, the mayor's gotta say, okay, I'll put that guy.
But yes, you want a tractor now, even he, he, he driving, uh, 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 and some of his other, some of his other supervisors, they can get on the tractor. He on the tractor state, but they.
Oh, I, I, I did sign a book, mom.
Right, we need a side cover, yeah, we need that, man, we waste money, that's.
Sixty-nine dollars.
Mister President, I've got, Mister President, I've got a, this, a, a serious issue that I have been avoiding talking about this because I really wanted to get out of the council before I had dealt with this with the city. But I'm just, y'all are gonna have to come over to my house and see this, we'll, we'll have, y'all come over Sunday, we'll have roses to unicorn bread out on my deck, and if y'all can look at my backyard, um, I have, let me tell y'all something, you haven't seen those sink holes like I have in my backyard. It is more than five feet deep.
That's a person.
It is a person, well, I say we had, yeah, it, uh, it doesn't touch the one on Oak Street, the Olympic sized swimming pool that was under the pavement. But it is, I knew there was a sink hole, and I kept just planting flowers and stuff in it. And Bailey had told me years ago, Rita had sent dirt and put it in there, but the, and I know that there's, just see the drainage pipe that goes down. And there's a big, real big gorge, cause there's a creek that the drainage thing's into down the baseline. The one that one of my constituents and friends buzzes about, there's a manhole that, you know, there's pitch, he called it in and all that stuff. And I don't blame him, but, but anyway, um, I was working in my yard yesterday. And I've been doing a lot of stuff to try to fill it in and group it, now, if it was just the top, erosion from the top, I can handle that. Because I, I took care of that, um, in my house on the river filling in and all that stuff. But I can't do anything about the erosion from underneath from when pipes and did that, so, all that stuff. But, um, up, on up in my yard, it's a road, they took it on up in my yard, I've got like the holes and they're like way down and just layering, I'm gonna step in it and just go into a million. Um, and, and truly, I want y'all to come see, and, and I came turning, I, I, I went ahead and called Ray and said, look at where the city lines run, because, um, Bailey had already told me that they had checked it out years ago, and it, and told me where it runs from, and it runs right down through there. And it probably, the lines just probably need to be replaced, um, or a pipe or something. So, I don't know, I, I, you know, I really hate to ask that, especially when I have so many constituents, that's why I didn't say anything before. Cause I have so many constituents that are having to, to deal with, you know, all these things, and I hate to have work done in my house when, but this is just, this is a matter of.
Is the city, ma'am, is the city, is city, is part of the city drain, you know, pipes?
Yeah, it is, oh, I, I would never.
That's what I'm saying, it's part of the city, that's an issue of the city.
It is, I mean, no, I would never, ever, and that's why I want me, y'all to come to, pardon? Oh, I have no idea, I, I hope it not a lot. Yeah, and it's right, but I, I want y'all to come get it too, cause I don't want to do that any things, you know, that. Okay, I'm just kidding, yeah.
Anything else?
All right, y'all, listen, one more thing, yeah, this is really important, and I did want to go ahead and tell y'all. August twenty-fifth, it's one year out from the municipal election of twenty-twenty. So, I went ahead, I took the liberty of going ahead and getting the Selma High Auditorium. Thank you, Mr. Ashorn and Mr. Boyd for helping me with this. Um, but, and, and in working with the cities to, to get in the Selma Auditorium and to have a mayoral forum strictly informational, not a political thing, just to be informational. And not to have any other politic in, it's to be pretty non-political, um, no other candidates. Just for the mayoral candidates to come and say, I'm Joe Smith, I'm running for mayor, um, and this is why I'm running. This is what I plan to do, this is how I plan to do it. And depending on how many folks there are, it will be Sunday, August twenty-fifth, um, from three to five. I've got the auditorium from two to five, but just to, some preparation time. But anyway, the, y'all, the election is one year and some change out.
That's right.
And people wanna know who's running for what, and I remember the first time I ran, Labor Day weekend, we had this, we had this big thing over at the convention center. And here we are, it's sneaking up and not, and it's, and so especially now, people are wanting to go, and I, I'm, I'll tell you, I had said it before, and I'm gonna go ahead and say it and just announce it, I am not running again, I'm not running for anything but my life. So, I'm gonna do, I mean, I, I, I'm gonna do, you know, I'll be doing some other things to, uh, working with some other projects to typical do gooder stuff I like to do.
We get my playground for you.
I'm, honey, I'm gonna get your playground, I'm gonna get your, take care of your people at the little house to do stuff. But anyway, there are a lot of things that I wanna do, cause I love Selma, and I'll do things to help y'all and to help the new mayor, and to, to do whatever, to help anybody I can, because I love this town, and, um.
What's the hours, Councilwoman?
It is going to be, we'll start at two, just in preparation, now, here's the, here's the rule. Um, I need, now, any mayoral candidates need to just show up to be prepared, to look for, and to speak, and whatever. And don't, you know, please don't bring things to give out and campaign or anything, just be there prepared to speak and say, I'm running for mayor, blah, blah, cause that will be.
Usually we're speaker thought.
Yeah, and all that.
Uh, and.
Forum is from three to five or two to five?
Well, three to five, but we'll be there to open it at two and all that kind of stuff, to get, yeah, to get, get prepared and stuff. Uh, and this is just, the.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm gonna, I'm gonna announce this.
Yeah, yeah, please, well, and I need help, and I'm gonna depend on you to help me, because we gotta do logistics.
We get forums every year.
Yeah, I know, we need to do, yeah, well, okay, well, we, we need to, you know, we need to people to keep time, we need people to do this, that, readers and all that, so I would ask my fellow council and friends to help me with all that, so we'll do some planning.
Okay, uh.
I'll announce it tonight.
Also, also too, two items on your side, John, I would, the city's from Alabama Wildlife Federation wanted to use Water Avenue for October seventeenth, twenty nineteen.
Is that Wildgarden?
Wildgarden, yeah.
Oh, I have, uh, they, that has changed.
Okay, okay.
They are not going to be, they've changed the beginning.
Okay.
It's not gonna be in front of the St. James this year because of the construction.
Okay.
They felt like that might be, uh, a problem with the construction. But they're gonna be at Arch Revive on the other end of Water Avenue, which I think it wasn't nice, sweet, and so do they. But it's still gonna be same time, same channel.
So we have to, uh.
We don't have to worry about anything, waving, voting.
Also too.
Just go.
Where is it gonna be?
It's Selma High.
So we're not gonna, it's not gonna be on Water Street?
Oh, yeah, it is, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, honey, I'm, I, for Wildgarden took office at Arch Revive, it's on Water Avenue.
You said other end of Water Avenue.
Right, that's what, that, uh, you're, when you said Water Avenue.
Rules changed on that end of Water Avenue.
Right. The rules changed.
On that end of Water Avenue.
Right.
As proposed by the councilwoman here.
Oh, that's okay, yeah, I, I mean, I think it's great, they, they know, because they're working with Arch Revive and the, being you and all that stuff, so.
Is it gonna be on Arch, at Arch Revive, is it gonna be on Water Avenue?
It's gonna, uh, uh.
It's gonna be in the streets. If it's gonna be in the streets, then we need to, we need to, we need to help.
Oh, rules will change on one side.
Hold on, wait a minute, I was speaking.
No, no, he, he gave it, I, I don't know, I just heard, go ahead, go ahead, go ahead, I'm talking, he gave it, no, go ahead, go ahead.
Well, I don't know why he did that, because I was speaking.
Okay.
Okay, but, um, as she stated, we voted, uh, that we wouldn't do, um, have anything with Greece, uh, down there because of the sidewalks. We voted on that, and so if we're, for consistency, we said that the, um, Jubilee could not have it, then we need to definitely have that discussion. No one has talked to me, no one has brought to me, this is my first hearing of it, and I'm quite sure all of you are aware, because you just said, that's what made me think, where did you say it's gonna be? Water Avenue or water, three sides, so, yeah, we need to have much discussion, because th- those are the rules that we set in the parameters, and we don't want to appear to have a bias or a tendency.
You are right.
Yeah, so we have to be consistent.
Well, I tell you what, that was what, um, Tim called me today and told me that after talking to the mayor, that's what they decided.
You know, he gets a conversation.
And so, um, and so, it may be a good idea for you to call Tim Wood and the co-op. I do, we grew up together, I didn't poke Alabama.
I didn't grow up with you, man.
Oh.
I did, I didn't poke, Thomas is way, Coke's is way.
Well, make a cross the border on Water. Yeah, yeah, so I, I don't think it's fair to, to, to make a decision and have Greece on my side of Water Avenue. I got a problem with that now. And see, I, I don't even call, vote on that, cause there's no way in hell I would vote on have Greece on this side and no Greece on this side. I got a problem with it now, so, I, I'm not aware of that.
Well, you invited to every meeting, and actually, you were here at that meeting, you may not have voted on it, you may not even remember, but you were present. And you were invited to every committee meeting.
I know, but I'm not, I'm not.
But allow me to finish, I want to be consistent, what we stated at that time for the Jubilee is that you did not have new sidewalks, you did not have a new area that was placed on there, and they had, uh, actually had the festival all throughout, um, Water Avenue, and so because of the, the new sidewalks, and because of the new siding and the things that you all paid for before I ever got in, that we wanted to protect those things, and so we decided that it would be to the right left, if you're going, going south of, of Water Avenue, so on the east side of Water Avenue, this would be the only side that we would have the festival. And so if you're stating that you don't want it on either side, that's the entertainment district, um, and so we're going to need something. But you could say that any Greece items that we gonna have, because I'm sure you're going to stand that we, we don't do that, and it was not only for the Greece, but it was for the businesses on Water, on that side of Water Avenue that complained, and your side of Water Avenue actually didn't have businesses open at the time, but we're gonna have the St. James that's coming, it may not be open at this time, but those are all factors and things that we need to consider.
Look, Miss President, can I finish now?
Go ahead.
Okay, well, like I said again, I, I don't think it's fair, but we do have a new sidewalks on our side as well, we need to look into that, because, right, cause like, what good for penis, good for fall, you know, where the hell I'm going on this. I don't know about that, that's what we do, and I'm not gonna go all night, man, you right. Because whole Water Avenue Entertainment District, right, all right, be good, you can do it, John.
I'll take it.
Me, I'll do it.
Not surprised.
And so, what else, what else, seeing, we can, I.
Hold up, go ahead.
And I'll pull those meeting, um, minutes, so we can, we can have an opportunity to look at those at the next. And I'll pull those meeting minutes, so we can, we can have an opportunity to look at those at the next water session, because it doesn't call for, um, using profane language, um, and being unruly. What it does call for is additional discussion, because what I don't want to do is say that we're partial to any one part. That, that is the rule that we came up with as a committee, um, President Bowie was a part of that committee, President Benjamin was part of that committee, I was a part of that committee, and President, Councilman Michael Johnson was a part of that committee. That is the, that is the information that we came back as a committee with, the recommendation that we not have that over there because of the grease traps and because of the businesses that were open and that were complaining that the businesses were being included. Um, and so, those are things that we all need to look at and address, and we missed the Wildlife?
October seventeenth.
October seventeenth.
We didn't bring back the minutes, let's, let's
I, I bring the minutes at the next council meeting, I'll contact Mr. Bowie before the weekend, I'll do it.
Also, too, Councilors, I want to remind you to keep, uh, Coach Parrish, he can pray.
Who?
Coach Parrish.
John Parrish.
John Parrish.
He's been put on hospice, Parrish.
No.
Yes, last person.
Also, too, any consent item that you would like for me to, uh, put on the consent from the center tomorrow?
Grounds cleaning.
Please text it to me, I didn't run it out.
You know what I said back, Ms. Kirif, Dr. Kirif, right there? Ain't that a consent, if they have to vote on that? With the school, Knock, Knock School, out front. Huh? Huh? I'm asking, uh, out front, uh, uh, of the public street of Knock School, where you drop off the kids at?
Oh, I, I talked with, uh, I talked with, uh, Lieutenant Fitz about that, cause he's over the traffic division. I went on, asked him if he could to go ahead and write some, some signs.
No, we need some paint, too.
Some signs, and also, some barrels.
Yeah, but what about the paint, paint? No, I'm saying, uh, uh, we gonna be able to get some one, two paint panels, you know, we don't have any other work.
Other work on this street?
They do.
Yeah.
Don't we, they don't?
Leave there.
They, I used to do it, tell me. Okay, well, I'm asking you, because, uh, we had some kids at Knock School, that's
I tell you what, go ahead.
Let me tell you, God, it's wild, we had children coming across the railroad track, and the car came in from the opposite way, we only have one, uh, patrol out there. We don't have one on the other end of the track, so, you know how some people just not gonna do right? And these children were coming, coming to, they walked across the track. This car come through that wide hole, and, uh, if it hadn't been for someone else, he would've hit the kid.
That's what I was talking about, that's what I meant with, uh, Lieutenant Fitz. Uh, he, I told him about this situation, uh, I think today, but I didn't get a message. Whatever we need to do, we can get Blake or somebody to do
We can get somebody to paint there.
Yeah, Blake or somebody, that'll be fine.
We need to get someone that, that understands public works and street traffic, and I mean, I don't doubt that he can paint, but we wanna make sure
That's why I said Lieutenant Fitz, like I'm trying to ask, because he's over the traffic division. He's familiar with the street painting, he's familiar with the signs, he's familiar with it, and that's why I asked you to be part of it.
Okay, uh, President Bowie, I want, I want, uh, he's gonna take care of this, because we know, we got these parents
That's mine, okay, that's mine.
I just
Also, I talked to him about the signs that, you know, the signs, the, uh, the paint, the whole logistics, all everything, cause like I said, he oversee the whole traffic division.
All right, thank you. And Carl, can you give me the, the money out of the, if y'all feel like that, President?
I gave you some money.
Don't worry about me, girl. I got things I'm getting raised that money.